Good evening and welcome to the Westboro Select Board meeting called here on Tuesday, February 11th, 2025, being just past six o'clock. I'll call the meeting to order. Ask all those that are able to please stand and join me in the Pledge of Legions.
Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America, this is a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. We'll move into open forum. Is anybody here for open forum? We got a bunch. Okay, start here.
Hi, Joanne Aramini, Seven Meadow Road. On January 13th, there was a meeting of the Active Transportation and Safety Committee. I attended that as Shelby attended it as well. On January 14th, at the Select Board meeting, Shelby provided updates about what happened at that meeting, and there were some concerns at that meeting about a particular participant's behavior. And Shelby had referenced that she was going to be working on getting the recording for that meeting posted to the town site. I've been waiting to see that and have not seen that at all. So yesterday, there was the meeting for the Active Transportation Safety Committee again, and I asked for the link to the recording. And I was told that no, I could not have it, and that nobody requested it, and that they just don't do that. I believe Patrick as well, at the January 14th meeting, directed Town Manager to also work on getting the recording because everybody was going to be listening to it. So I'm wondering if you all got it. Have you listened to it? And if you did, I'd like a link to it as well, please. Thank you.
I can just generally respond. Just, the board has not, to my knowledge, received a link to that. I have, I have seen the link because I was part of the meeting, and so I get to review the minutes just as an observer. Ms. Aramini, as you know, the recordings are not part of the open meeting law requirement. Christie can speak to the specifics of that. However, one of my issues in correspondence items, and I'll bring it up now, is I do think that there's an opportunity, not just raised by your concern, but for our committee handbook, which was done, how long ago, Alan?
Several years.
Several years ago. Technology has changed. COVID changed a lot of things. I think there's an opportunity to enhance our committee handbook to address this very issue. So at some future meeting, and perhaps a goal of the Select Board in the next calendar year, the next cycle of the board, it's something we can look at updating, updating. Because I do think meeting recordings tell a full story of what happened at the meeting, and, you know, in full transparency, I don't know why we don't share those recordings.
I'd like to point out that on the website for that committee, there is a link to recordings. So it does exist there, and there actually are recordings of some meetings there. But this one is not.
It's just, it's not a consistent practice across committees, and so I do think that's something we, as a board, you know, should address. So.
So I will not be able to get a link to this January 13th meeting?
I'll follow up with, I don't want to answer that right now.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna switch to this side, then go back. So Jen?
Hi, Jen Kirkland, Recreation Director. I just wanted to take a minute to let people know that we're holding a Meet the Mascot Day at the Community Center on Saturday. We have five or six local sports teams mascots that'll be at the Community Center from 11 to 12. We have the New England Revolution, Woo Socks, Boston Bruins, and a few others. So if you haven't been to the Community Center yet, it's a great opportunity to come down, get out of the house, and meet some mascots, which should be fun.
Great.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay.
Kevin Barry, Eight Indian Pond Road. First, I just want to open up and just say to Seela and town officials, we're not requesting information and documents to be annoying. It's more a fact that there's a lot of information out there that we can't see, we're not privy to, that we need this information once presentations are made, or meetings are had, or formal information. Just do a little more digging. And it's come up in a number of different, different projects that I've worked with. So I just want to say thank you for the cooperation. I know it's not, it's, we're not doing to be a pain in the ass, but it's, it's gone a long way, and it helps us to answer questions, put it that way. So with that said, is, I just wanted to bring attention, some concerns, I might steal your thunder, Shelby, but as far as the most recent ATSC meeting last night, it was brought to our attention that in discussing the capital project request slide, that I think a CEPC meeting, as well as the January 6th joint meeting for the Plant Board and the Select Board, this slide was presented as far as future considerations for the BWALT. Basically, it was mentioned that for fiscal year '26, there was going to be a request for about $400,000 for 25% design study and initial construction costs, as was explained at the CEPC, as well as at the January 6th meeting. Last night, we found out that there was actually a application submitted for a design study, for the 25% design study, basically for the Mass Trails, for a six, for a total amount of $625,000. $500,000 for a grant, and had a match of $125,000. There's been discussions and meetings about grants and pursuing grants up until that point. There was never any confirmation to ATSC or any other meeting that that was confirmed that that was going to happen. The deadline was February 3rd. Okay, keep that, that date in mind. January 16th, you, we were presented this slide, that the cost was $400,000. February 3rd, with the deadline, so less than two weeks, about two weeks later, there was a deadline for a, an application for a funding grant for Mass Trails, was submitted. Never discussed, never presented at the meeting. It's a 56% increase, according to the numbers that were presented. So my concern is, there's no way that the planning department did not know this was in process. So we were all presented this slide, this information, and it changed within two weeks. So either they're withholding information or not being transparent. So that is a major issue. Also, what was a concern was discussion about how to fund that $125,000. And what came to light in discussions was in-kind services, leading to believe that the town would handle that, being mostly on the DPW and maybe some volunteers. So that's a major concern, and additional cost to the town. So I think that should have been a divulge and should have explained a little bit further. I think that's it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Paul Daodis, Brady Road. I'm a 40-year homeowner in this town. I've searched online for the BWALT Trail Committee, only to find a community advocate report that the BWALT Trail Project is a collaboration between the Community Development Director, Fred Laurenato, Director of Planning, Jenny Gringas, Assistant Town Planner, Kristen Bellinger, and the DPW Director, Chris Payton. During the February 4th Planning Board meeting, the Committee Chair, Hazel Norris, directed citizens with BWALT questions and concerns to adjust, address the Select Board. During that meeting, Kristen Bellinger shared information with everyone that the DOT, that the Mass DOT Complete Streets Act and Shared Streets Act approved a 2029 project, which is an eastbound sidewalk on the, from East Main, Route 30, from Flanders Road to Thomas Newton Drive. At previous meetings, citizens have noticed the lack of access via sidewalks to the BWALT Trail for many neighborhoods. This was kind of cleared up by that statement from this woman that we had not heard from before. These citizens have been labeled detractors. Have the BWALT planners reached out to either the fire or police departments for concerns on trail user safety? The taxpayers lack information. You either sign up for an emailed Town Manager Quarterly Newsletter, or you search many online sites. Is it possible to have a meeting with the BWALT Trail Project Group? In closing, thank you for all your time and your work.
Thank you very much.
I just, I have a couple copies.
Thank you.
You're sitting.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else for open forum? Okay, moving on in the agenda, the next thing is for annual town meeting warrant presentations. And I think first thing, turn to Christie, any?
No, so we had identified at a previous meeting some of the article proponents that you wanted to hear from. So first on the list is our Economic Development Coordinator for the Small Business Grant Program. I just want you to note that in your pocket is the most recent version of the grant, so that this particular article, the amount changed. The EDC looks to have $60,000 available in each fiscal year. However, because it was not fully expended, they've reduced their ask just to bring it back up to that $60,000. So I probably stole some of Laura's thunder there, but.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening. My name's Laura Crawford. I'm the Economic Development Coordinator. So, thank you for hearing me out here. This program was funded through an article for the fiscal year 2024, and has now been added to the regularly recurring articles for 2025, and would fund the Small Business Grant Program that is administered by the Economic Development Committee. The motion for this article requires a simple majority vote. Since, so, so because the timing is a little off, in other words, we asked for funding in, for the March, but we're really working off of fiscal years. Some of my numbers might sound a little confusing, but I've tried the best. I've been here since October, so I've tried my best to read through everything, the old stuff that I have, to bring you sort of current information. So since the July of 2023, which is Q1 for 2020, fiscal year 2024, there have been nine grants paid out, and three grants have been paid out in 2025, so since July of 2024. We estimate there has been almost $1 million of investment from the businesses in jobs and capital improvements as a result of these grants. The grants have paid for things like pergolas at Olman's Ice Cream and equipment, and built out expenses for Coffee and Pie, Fresh Monkey, and The Curvaceous Bride, for example. The relatively small amounts that go under $5,000 generally, that is spread out among these many small businesses, is a great investment from the town's perspective, and results in jobs and businesses investment, which is exactly the purpose for the grants. We're very appreciative for the town's continued commitment in supporting small businesses, and hope we can favorably see this amount, the funding, go back up to the $60,000. Thank you.
Great.
Questions?
Open to the board for any questions or comments?
Laura, thank you very much. As a member of the Economic Development Committee, talk a little bit about this. Yes, we're only bringing it back up to that $60,000 balance. That's what's allowed each year to be distributed. I think, and part of the reason is we're only asking for 38 is because Laura's only been here since October, right? So part of this is having an economic development coordinator there who's also coordinating a big part of this. It's been a highly successful program. I don't think I have to sell it too hard to the board, but thank you for considering this. And again, welcome. Laura, off to a great start. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Laura, what is the FY 2025 goal for small business grants? What is the number that's sort of been set? I know it varies by dollar amount. Do we have a number that we hope to award?
Number of businesses?
Number of grants that we would hope to award in FY 2025, so present year.
Yeah, so I mean, looking, looking at it, you would, you would have as many as up to 12 if you were to give out 50,000, excuse me, 5,000, to get to the 60.
Yep. Okay, so that would be, that's sort of top angle if we get qualified. And we've already given out three.
Correct. So, so there was three, and then three before I got here. We just actually gave out another three. And there's one or two that are already sort of in the queue for the next quarter.
Okay, great.
Yeah, so it's looking good.
And so if businesses are just tuning in tonight, because they, that's what they do on a Tuesday night, they would contact you at the Community Development Department to learn more about the grant program?
Sure, or there's information on the Economic Development webpage.
Okay, thank you.
And if I remember correctly, is everything set up online currently, I think, since you've started?
Yes, we moved it to the Permit Pro. So the applicant, the information is just on the website, but then there's a link to the Permit Pro for the application.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we can actually do better reporting next year.
Great.
Great.
Answered my question.
Perfect. I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next.
That was 11D.
Yep, that was, sorry.
That's okay, no.
11D was the last one. I'm late on that. Okay, so next then are zoning articles, street acceptance, sidewalk easement for the Director of Planning.
Hey, everyone.
Folks, folks, feel free to help me to.
I do have presentations, if I can connect.
This is the last four articles, so Articles 23.
22.
23.
23.
23 through 25.
Yep.
Great, great. So Articles 23 through 25, and the latest draft of the warrant, version three, dated February 7th.
I think it's up there. Can you all see it on the screen?
We can see it on this in front of us.
Okay, great. So I have just a couple of presentations on the zoning articles, really to just give context to what we're requesting and describe it in a little more detail. And then I'll talk about the sidewalk easement article as well, briefly, and then the acquisition of the parcel in Oak Street. So again, Jenny Jengas, Director of Planning. And so the first article I'm going to talk about is Article 23, which is for accessory dwelling units, or as I will refer to them from now on, ADUs, since we, in planning, like to speak in acronyms. So as you all are aware, in response to the ongoing housing crisis, the state took action by passing the new legislation in August of '24. Specifically, it amends the Zoning Act, so Chapter 40A, Section 3. And it makes it easier for homeowners to build ADUs by allowing them by right in single-family zoning districts. So that means that homeowners no longer need to apply for a special permit through the Zoning Board of Appeal to create an ADU on their property. So it's important to point out the purpose of this law, which was to increase housing opportunities. ADUs provide an alternative option for seniors who want to age in place, or individuals with medical needs and their caregivers. ADUs also promote compact growth, making better use of the existing land, infrastructure, and buildings, which can offer a more sustainable and cost-effective choice than developing a single-family home. And then the changes to the permitting process help to lower the costs and remove uncertainties, making it easier for homeowners to build them. making it easier for homeowners to build them. ADUs also offer significant benefits for property owners and occupants. So for homeowners, ADUs can provide a low-cost housing option for adult children and relatives, or create a long-term solution for seniors to be able to downsize while staying in their community, offering rental income to help with maintenance and repair costs. And then for occupants, ADUs are a great fit for smaller households, offer a way for longtime Westboro residents to stay in the neighborhood that they love, and are generally more affordable than traditional housing. They also provide a critical housing options for individuals that may need physical assistance to live close to family. And you probably are all not even listening to what I said and wondering why Fonzie is on the screen. That's, that's fine. I found this on the AARP website, which has a lot of great resources for ADUs, and it reminded me that in Happy Days, that Fonzie lived in an above-garage ADU, which was from the Cunningham family. So I don't know if you all watched Happy Days, but in that sitcom, at that time, they had issues with their hardware store, it was going to close, so to get that additional income, they rented out the apartment above the garage, and that was how they got that extra income. So I just thought that was a fun example. So in Westboro, we're essentially following what the requirements are for the legislation. It sets clear limits on municipal regulations to ensure that smoother approval process. We cannot require a special permit for ADUs, impose excessive parking requirements, so we can't require more than one parking space unless it's within half mile of a train station or bus station. We can't require owner occupancy or place any other unreasonable restrictions. However, we still can have some oversight, such as Title V requirements, and then regulations for dimensional setbacks, and then the bulk and height of the structures. We are also able to prohibit short-term rentals, which are things that are done through platforms such as Airbnb. So we are, like I said, mostly in line with what the state is requiring. The ADUs will have specific requirements. They must have a separate entrance, either directly from the outside or through a shared entryway, that complies with state building codes. In terms of size, an ADU cannot exceed half of the gross floor area of the main home or 1,000 square feet. The legislation requires 900 square feet or half of the gross floor area, but in Westboro, we already allow 1,000 square feet by right if it's attached. So we just wanted to keep that requirement consistent with what we already have. And then additionally, ADUs must comply with the local dimensional restrictions, so they would have the same requirements as we would for a single-family home. And then, as I mentioned before, we would prohibit short-term rentals. So in a typical situation, someone would come in with an application for an ADU. If they meet the requirements, they would go for a building permit. And again, they would have to meet the restrictions for the dimensional requirements, for the setbacks, and then the prohibition on short-term rental. However, we did add in that in some cases, they may request a larger ADU than would be allowed, so larger than 1,000 square feet, or reduce setbacks through a special permit from the ZBA. And that is exactly what we allow for now, so that's not changing. In addition, if it's a non-conforming structure, they may have to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals to modify that non-conforming structure. Again, that's the same that we require now, but the use is still allowed, of course. So this is the timeline. Technically, right now, the section in Mass. General Law, 40A, Section 3, is in effect, so someone could come in right now and apply for an accessory dwelling unit that meets all of those requirements. And I believe I had presented to this board an update on that a few months ago, but just a reminder that when we post the legal notice for a zoning change, that's the date it goes into effect. So this technically is in effect as of January 31, so anybody coming in would need to comply with what we have proposed for the bylaw. Should there be any changes, or should it not pass town meeting, then it would just default to what the legislation requires. So ADUs are still allowed by right, but it would be the 900 square feet instead of the 1,000. And that's the end of that one. Do you want me to take questions for each one?
Yeah, why don't we take questions on each one? I think that might be easier. Just go there.
Okay.
Just one quick question. So a single-family home adds an ADU. Is it still technically a single-family home, or does it become qualified as a multifamily home?
It would still be a single-family home with an accessory.
Just with an additional dwelling.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, so two things. One is Jenny was kind enough to come on the 01581 Let's Talk and talk about this specific article. So if folks want a more in-depth conversation or information, I would encourage you to go to Westboro TV to watch that. So just as, maybe feedback for as this is presented, perhaps at town meeting, but perhaps you can answer this now. So obviously, an ADU has to go through the permitting process. Once it goes through that process and is sort of underway and actually built, built out or upfitted, what is the link to the assessor's office to notify the assessor that that single-family property has been altered in some way, such that potentially the property would be valued differently?
So they are notified when a building permit is issued, and then I believe when there's a certificate of occupancy. So they would be notified of it. It's a separate permit.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And I just, I'm going to ask the question, I know the answer, I just think it'd be good for the public clarification, ADUs are rental units. They're not, you can't build an ADU and sell it as a separate residence.
Correct. Yeah, you can't condo-ize it.
Right, okay.
Question, a good comment.
Yeah. Just on that note, can you just reiterate, though, the, this bylaw would not allow for short-term rentals? Can you speak to that? Jenny?
Sure. So we are allowed to, per the change in legislation, to prohibit short-term rentals. A municipality can also allow them for ADUs, but through the zoning working group, we decided that we felt it was more appropriate for Westboro to prohibit them. And a short-term rental would be a rental for less than 30 days, so typically you would see those through platforms like Airbnb or VRBO, things like that.
Can I follow up on that? How do we enforce that?
It's not easy to enforce. I mean, we don't see Westboro as a destination that typically has a lot of short-term rentals, but it's really complaint-driven. When you search on those types of websites, it doesn't provide the address, so it really would be complaint-driven.
Okay, perfect. Other questions on this one?
Nope.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to.
I'm sorry, can I just go back to, I know Jenny and I discussed this in the show, but we do have a sewer moratorium right now. So Jenny, could you speak to the sewer moratorium relationship to someone wanting to put in an ADU and how that would be addressed?
So it would still be in effect. It would be like adding on another bedroom, so it would not, the sewer moratorium would still apply to any new ADUs until it was lifted.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I know we moved on, but one, one final question, again, just for the public to what you said at the end. If I heard it correctly, this goes to town meeting. If it, if it doesn't pass at town meeting, the state regulation's still in effect, the rules that we're putting in, which was one allowing for 100 square feet more, wouldn't be in effect. But also, I would imagine the restriction on short-term, short-term rentals wouldn't be in effect either. Correct?
Correct. So the state allows the municipality, municipality to have the choice, but if you are silent on the matter, it's generally, generally going to default to allowing it.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions on that?
Now we're done.
Okay.
So the next one I'll talk about is Article 24, which are, is for revisions to Section 5.3, 5.4, and the Table of Uses. Those sections are for the dimensional controls in the bylaw. So this article aims to fix some inconsistencies in those sections in the Table of Uses, mostly pertaining to the M1 zoning district, which is for municipal projects. It also removes an outdated rule that requires town meeting to approve the dimensional controls for municipal projects in the M1 zoning district. Under Mass. General Law, town meeting is responsible for approving budgets and reviewing bylaw changes, but the current bylaw gives town meeting a role similar to that, that it would a special permit granting authority, such as the Planning Board and the ZBA, who has that responsibility to set those dimensional controls. The proposed changes will require municipal projects in the M1 district to go through site plan review process with the Planning Board, aligning it with other projects. The amendments also establish dimensional standards that reflect the requirements in other areas of the bylaw, while also allowing for some flexibility for municipal projects. Lastly, this article updates the Table of Uses to allow municipal activities that occur, such as the sale of Christmas trees and indoor recreation, which are technically, right now, prohibited in the M1 zoning district. So I just have a slide here where I, because I love to do the research, I went back to town meeting in 2014, and I looked at every article that had something that came to the town meeting to set the dimensional controls for a project in the M1. And you can see here, it's mostly public safety items, or Hastings Elementary, Fails Elementary, but you can see that town meeting, for the most part, set the setbacks at zero. And then the height does vary a little bit, but it's typically reflective of the zoning district that it's within. So if it's within a residential district, the height was a little less. And then these are just some additional ones. Again, you can see that most of them reflect a zero setback requirement that would have been approved at town meeting. So with the proposed changes, we are proposing set dimensional controls for the zoning district, so it doesn't need to go to town meeting to set those. As, as I mentioned, most approvals from town meeting had a zero-foot setback, and we shifted that to five feet. Again, the height reflected in most of the approvals was consistent with that of the adjacent uses, therefore, we reflected that in the requirement. While the setbacks would be set, the building height and stories, again, would reflect what is required in the abutting zoning district. And here, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the process, because it is quite lengthy currently and a little confusing. So under the current bylaw, a municipal project needs to come to town meeting multiple times, one for funding, one to set dimensional controls, and then possibly more, depending on what the project is. In addition, the project needs to go to the Planning Board as a zoning article, which has additional legal requirements, including a butter notifications, a public hearing. And then after town meeting, if town meeting votes to approve the dimensional controls, it needs to go back to the Planning Board for site plan review, which requires additional legal notices, a butter notifications, things like that. Overall, this costs additional money and time for the town. Each time we post a legal notice, it's hundreds of dollars for that legal notice to be posted, and then in addition, staff time and everything else. Further, even if the funding passes for an article, if a zoning article fails for the dimensional controls, then it can't come back for two years. And then, this doesn't even take into consideration the rezoning of a lot to become part of the M1 zoning district, which requires additional public hearings and town meeting. I want to reiterate that the proposed change will not skip the requirement for a project to go to town meeting for funding, which is appropriate, but it would remove the requirement to go to town meeting to set the dimensional controls, which would be more appropriate for the Planning Board, as described in Mass. General Law. The project would then still go to the Planning Board for site plan review, which requires a butter notification and a public hearing. It would still involve the public outreach through notifications and meet the public meeting requirements. Again, most land in the M1 district is used for public needs, like water treatment facilities, municipal buildings, and schools, all the things we need to have, some with very specific requirements for public safety. Overall, the proposed process will simplify and streamline the process, saving time and money for the town and making it more efficient. And that is my last slide.
Okay, questions?
Yes.
Alan?
So the standard site plan process, it would be presented to the select board for comment to the Planning Board as well, correct?
Correct. That's another good point, yes.
The slight, the site plan review isn't just before the Planning Board, conservation weighs in, if necessary, the select board receives, you know, can provide comments and other boards and committees as appropriate, so.
Yes.
DPW, Public Fire.
DPW, yes, Police Fire, all.
Yes, it still typically will go through even our one-stop-for-businesses process, so it comes in there for review. And then, yes, that's a good point, it would still be required to go to the Select Board for comment on the site plan.
Shelby or Sean, questions?
Yeah, so I understand the town-side sort of efficiency, as you've laid it out, what's, is there any downside from a developed, well, now this is municipal, so let me rephrase it, is there any downside for residents in this process?
They would still be able to have the input like they would for any other project.
Because there's a public notice through the, sorry, for Planning Board through site plan, there's a, they can hear it here through the site plan process review, okay?
Correct. They would still be in front of the Planning Board to voice their concerns about the setbacks or, or whatnot.
Right. The funding piece, so there's still those, those opportunities to engage.
Right, exactly. Because the funding part, they're going to town meeting really for the use.
Yep.
But what's happened is this has evolved, is that town meeting has become the special permit granting authority for the dimensions, which is supposed to be held by the Planning Board or Zoning Board.
Can you, the Christmas tree change to the table use, that one makes sense? I'm assuming we're talking about kind of now how we, the town allows that effort to take place over at Hastings. The indoor recreation piece, is that directly related to the community center? Like, why are we adding that?
It was a thought. So right now, the community center is not zoned M1. It's, it's under the Downtown Planning Overlay District, which allows that.
Right.
But should we ever want to rezone any property that the town owns as M1, indoor recreation wouldn't be allowed. So for example, you would not be able to have an indoor basketball court, because the use is not allowed.
Okay, thank you. No, and I raised that specifically because I know we, the community center project was a lengthy project, and I just want to be clear that it is properly zoned today.
Yes.
Without this change for the use of indoor recreation.
Correct, it is.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thanks.
There was actually a change a few years ago to this, the Table of Uses, that allowed for outdoor recreation in lots zoned M1, but for whatever reason, it left out indoor recreation.
Okay, thank you. That was a bit of a sigh of relief on my part. I was like, so thank you.
Yes, it went through the site plan review process and every, or the special permit process.
So you raised a question for me there, are schools zoned M1, and is then there a special exemption in terms of indoor recreation?
They are zoned M1, but I would assume the use would be for education.
No running around in the schools.
This would clear it up, though.
Yeah.
Definitely would clear it up with this use.
Right, right.
Great. Sean, anything?
Good, thank you.
Okay, I think we're good.
Okay. Now I'm going to. Okay. Now, I'm going to shift to... Okay, so Article 25 is for the acceptance of 190 to 212 Oak Street. This parcel was given to the town as a sending parcel. It was part of a special permit approval in the Transit Oriented Village District for Village Commons, which is at 1 Donia Drive. And so part of that, to get the additional density he needed for the apartment building that he is planning to construct, he needed to give the town a sending parcel in order to achieve that additional density. So this was part of the Planning Board decision. I just highlighted it up there, so you can see where it is. It's at the corner of Oak Street and Milk Street, and it needs Town Meeting approval to accept that. And then we would come back to the planning, or to the Select Board to have the deed transfer completed.
And just to orient that, sorry, if I'm looking at the lower portion, that, is that the courthouse? Is this just below?
Yes.
The courthouse, okay.
Yep.
It's to the east of the courthouse, right?
To the west.
This is...
Milk Street, then our, this property, and then the courthouse. If you're driving east, you'll pass this property on the way to the courthouse.
Yes.
This is going north on Milk Street. Sorry, yes, if you're driving east, sorry. Yes, I have my, yes. It's after the courthouse.
And just a follow-up question, because this is, the sending parcel, I believe, this has gone through the Planning Board as part of that permitting that this is an acceptable piece of property?
Yes.
For town use?
Correct.
Okay.
Question, just looking at the diagram, the parcel indicates that part of the driveway for the courthouse traverses this property. Are the easements that would be necessary for that already in place?
Yeah, that's a good question.
Or is this just a not-quite-accurate map?
This probably isn't totally accurate. Part of the requirement was to get a survey plan from the developer as part of the deed transfer, so we would ask for that to be done, and then we would know whether an easement was needed. But I honestly am not sure. The GIS map isn't totally reflective of the actual property lines.
But we would know that information before Town Meeting?
Yes. I should be able to get that information before Town Meeting. And it most likely already has an easement, if, if that is encroaching on that property.
Yeah, if we can figure that out, I mean, I'm sure there's going to be a question at Town Meeting, so.
Okay. Any other questions on that one?
So the, the building that's here, where it says 3328, that's not the courthouse, or it is?
Oh, okay.
No, I'm asking.
Oh, no.
Is that the courthouse?
It, it is the courthouse.
Okay.
Yes. I believe this is the courthouse.
Okay, so Milk Street.
Yeah, that's the courthouse.
Yeah.
Yeah, 186.
Okay.
So there's nothing on this land right now, it's just trees.
This is that turn-in, okay, all right, sorry, I was very disoriented here. Okay, thank you. I don't have any questions.
I can get some better photographs, too.
If we could just, yeah, I'm wondering if that is just wrong, whether those, I'd like to know if those, that driveway or whatever is actually...
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at the assessor's map in the 2021 Mass GIS ortho, and it's, it's matching what's in your graphic, so.
Okay.
Clarification as to whether or not, the, you know, the state-owned courthouse is using, we need, you know, we need to grant an easement for the driveway and the side drive.
Okay.
Yeah.
So question, so this is articles entitled sidewalk easement, but we are just...
No, this is different.
That's the next article.
I know, I thought the same thing.
Very close, okay.
We're not used to that from the Planning Board yet.
No, this is acceptance, yeah.
Anything less than two pages.
Yeah. See, I'm having a harder time answering the questions. I'm not used to something more simple, but hopefully it is still simple.
I reserve my question there.
Anything else on this one?
No, just some better graphics.
Okay. So then, Article 26 is for a sidewalk easement. So part of what the Planning Board has been doing is when we have projects come in for site plan review or a special permit, we are either asking for a sidewalk to be constructed, if it's appropriate for that area, or for an easement to be able to have the option to construct the sidewalk in the future. So on, at Two Bardo Lane, which has Boston Lawn Mower, the new location, part of the Planning Board agreement was that they would grant the town an easement for a sidewalk along the front of the property, which would allow for us to, one day, if we wanted to construct the sidewalk all along Oak Street.
So this is just an acceptance?
Yes. So there, there is no requirement for them to build it?
No requirement for them to build it, no. It was just the easement that was agreed to in the decision.
Great.
Any other questions on this one?
No.
You reserved your right.
Yeah, I think it's clear.
Okay.
There's a sidewalk potentially coming.
Perfect.
Okay.
Yep.
Great, that's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you.
So we had the street acceptance, but we don't accept, it wasn't a street acceptance. I think it's a generic title.
I think so.
Yeah, no, yeah, yeah, it is. I just, just...
So Chrissy, while it's loading, just a question on that, under that zoning, there was a space for street acceptance, but that, there is not an article for street acceptance, correct?
I guess not. I was asked to put in a placeholder, but maybe...
Okay.
But I guess not.
Okay. I don't see anything in the warrant either, so.
So I am, I'm talking about Article... Seventeen? Article seventeen, which is surveying, subdividing, and appraising the senior center property. So as the board is aware, when we first talked about the community center and the proposal to have it, or to, to purchase the building, we talked about moving the senior center into the community center at some point in the future, and using, potentially using the sale of this property, the senior center property, as a funding source for the project. But we were unable at the time to identify the actual cost, or the actual anticipated value of the senior center property, and so this article would fund the surveying work and subdivision of the property, as well as an appraisal for the senior center property, so that we would have an understanding of what we could expect in terms of a funding source. So I've pulled up the GIS. The reason, I think it's, the reason that we are talking about subdivision of the property is because, as you can see in the lower part of the property, the Rogers Fields are part of the, the current property. And, and when we talked about it initially, we had just talked about subdivision of this property, so that the town could retain Rogers Fields, and then also, but, but sell the building. I know when I brought this up recently, one of you raised the potential of selling the whole property regardless. So I think, I think that there's probably some more work to do to understand the value of the whole property versus that portion of the property. I think for the purpose of this discussion, I would recommend that we reach out to the Recreation Commission, the Recreation Director, and understand the use of that property. And then potentially, when we obtain quotes, we would obtain quotes for an appraisal that included and also excluded that portion of the property, so we could understand if the value of selling it as one property exceeded sort of the value that we get from it as a Recreation Department. So when we had reached out, we had reached out in September to try to understand what the cost of this survey work might look like, and that was quoted to us at the time of being just under $10,000, so about $8,500. We have not reached out yet to identify potential appraisal cost estimates, but I think if we are going to ask them to appraise it both ways, and then also with the survey work, we might need, we'll certainly need to update those numbers, understanding that, that we would need both options. I don't know, I think for the board tonight, it would, it would be good to understand if you wanted to go in that direction, or if you wanted to subdivide or not subdivide the property.
Can I?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, so I, I do believe I was, at least one person would raise the idea of, of potentially selling the whole property and not subdividing. I do think it makes sense to look at both options, albeit it is going to cost more in survey work, I understand that. This is a free cash article, nothing's free, and we have to be cognizant of that balance, certainly aware of that. But I do think that as we think about the, I don't know what the use is of that property. I know it's a town asset. I've, anecdotally, I've heard mixed reviews of how much it's used because of the water table and other reasons, and it's kind of a, you know, a little bit of an isolated area. So I, you know, from a development perspective, perhaps that has a lot of additional value. I don't know, but I do think it's worth going, so that's kind of where I'm leaning.
Alan?
So, a couple of questions. One, I agree with Shelby that it'd be good to look at both a subdivided section, as well as the entire property, in part because the appraisal will assess the build-to-build, whether or not you could actually build something where the, the ball fields are, given the water table, the proximity to the cedar swamp and wetlands, and restricted areas, and beavers, and, you know, the whole, you know, slosh that's down there. The other thing that's not clear on this picture is there's some pretty significant grading, great, you know, grading differences. So that, above the Rogers Road, where it says Rogers Field, there's that park, the gravel parking lot, that semi-circle is a playground. Immediately above that playground is a fairly steep wooded area, where the grade goes up to the grade of the senior center, and then immediately at the top of the senior center parking lot, there's another increase in grade as well. And so I'd be interested in having a sense of where the subdivision lines would be, knowing that the larger, the larger the parcel that would be subdivided for, to go with the senior center for sale, the more developable, the more development opportunity you have for the property, because it makes it easier to meet the open space requirements, particularly given the two pieces off to the east that sort of extend. That could, that could be the open space, you can have higher density where the building is now, and the parking lot, and, you know, potentially on some of the Housing Authority property as well. So there's, I'd like to see it geared towards maximizing the development potential for whatever portion goes away, and then if the fields themselves, that area really isn't useful to developer because of the water and the water table issues, then whether or not we keep it for recreation, or, you know, included in, not subdivide, included in the sale, because it creates open space that allows denser development in other parts of the property, would be a discussion at that time.
Yeah, no, thank you. Yeah, I'm fine with, I think, looking at it more than just the senior center property. I do think it makes sense. There are considerations for developers that are, that are beyond what I understand. I, Alan, through affordable housing, has a better understanding of the open space and, and how that impacts your ability to, to build out a parcel. I, I think I'm also cognizant, though, of, you know, sort of how significant we want to be able to make this development, right? I mean, you know, is it talking 20, 30 units, or 100 units? Like, like how big do we want to make this parcel in, in the opportunity? We have to, I think, be careful about that consideration. But here, we're just studying the opportunity, and so I'm okay with spending maybe slightly more than $8,500 to try and determine what that is.
Yeah, I'm in the same space, knowing the discussions that we've had around the community center, and using this as, as we've talked about as an offset. We were talking about the senior center itself, but this is that piece of property, so I'm supportive of doing it more, because I think the town's going to ask for that, and should ask for that, so I'm supportive of that. One thing that I have been asked, but I'm not sure of, is with, especially with that piece going up, that's kind of linked to our Hastings, whether, whether there's any, I don't know, call it connections, or easement, or something that came with the purchase of the property through, from the Hastings School. I guess my question is, is that something that comes out in the, do you know, that comes out, like in survey work, if there's?
We can just look into the property and see what's recorded. What, what I thought you were going to say, and I'll, I'll just say it, so that we can sort of put it out there, is I know that there has been some discussion amongst folks who recall when the senior center was built, the senior center was built, that the property was only to be used for very specific purposes, one of them being, I, I believe it was DPW, seniors, and, and something else. I just want to be really clear, we did go back and look at the Town Meeting vote, we worked with the Town Clerk, and we've looked at the registry. When we acquire a parcel as a municipality, as you all know, we have to state the purpose for which we are acquiring it. And so when this parcel was acquired, this purposes for which they were acquiring it was senior-related, I, I, and two other things, which I believe was DPW, maybe, school. And so that does not, that restricts the town in terms of their use of the parcel while they own it, but it does not restrict them from selling it for a different purpose. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Ian, just, is your question that, so that first green extension, and then to the right of that, as we're looking at the map, that gray part that connects, is that the part you were asking about?
No, the, kind of the green part, that, it's, it's a weird shape there, but I think the, and again, I don't, this is, I don't know if it is or not, but I think it had something to do with it, there may have been a connection, or something that, that was, I don't know whether for trail use, or something like that connecting. I don't know that there's trails there now or anything, but, but again, I, just as if you're appraising the property, if there's any other, if there's anything in the deed that has that in the survey piece to...
Yeah, we could look at that. I, I also want to make the point that this, this particular article does not authorize sale of this property, and I, I just think that that's a really important point, that if, there would need to be, once we understand sort of the value of the property, and how we would propose that it be subdivided, there would be a future Town Meeting article. It's required to authorize the Select Board to dispose of the property. And once the Select Board has received that authorization, then we would, you know, certainly work with Town Council on all of those documents. And included in that, I think, would be any, or I know, would be any sort of preservation of easements, or trails, or things like that in terms of our transfer of the property to the buyer.
Yeah, and I was just looking up on the map here on my computer, the, that gray part that sort of looks like a wrench, now that I'm looking at it, is actually owned by the state. That's all Commonwealth of Massachusetts, according to our map.
Right, so it's really the green part that I was looking at?
No, I know, but it just was interesting, thinking about development and, and some of those odd pieces. So just for anyone who's wondering, who owns that part that connects to Cedar Swamp, and it says Commonwealth of Mass, so.
It will never not be a wrench now.
But I imagine, too, with the appraisal, if there's something there, that it would probably come out in the appraisal.
It would restrict it, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know that it is, I don't remember back when we purchased it, unfortunately, so. so.
And my only other question would be for, just clarification going forward, the sort of, to two horizontal bars that make the shape of the wrench. The lower one is actually listed as a separate parcel. It's an off parcel, it's not part of the Ford Rogers Road. So I don't know if...
Yeah, it's four acres.
Is it, it's owned by the town, though?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think that that's, that's why they're shown as one parcel.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, but anyways, I mean, it sounds like the Board is supportive of what that request was, of finding the money out for the survey, plus the appraisals in both forms.
Yeah, very supportive of this, and I like the idea of getting input from the Rec Commission.
Absolutely.
Great, great, thank you.
I think it's a ball, we said ball fields, but as Alan mentioned, there's also playground there, so ball fields, playground.
Yep.
This is not picnic pavilion, no, it's basketball court.
That's right.
Could be pickleball.
Could be. Great.
Next.
The next, then, is the Waste Management Enterprise Fund. Is that you, too?
Yep, I just don't have any bullets.
You don't want to stand up there?
Do you want me to?
No.
What article are we on here?
So I think it's Article 8, yeah, Article 8. So this, this article would be to establish a Waste Management Enterprise Fund, or a Trash Enterprise Fund, as many communities have. The purpose of this would be to allow us to expend the revenue that comes into that, to that fund in the year in which we, we have the expenses. It's also, I included some information in your packet, but it's, it's often referred to as sort of a more transparent way to, to view the costs of a particular service. So as you know, we have four, three other enterprise funds, so that's the Stormwater Utility, the Water, and the Sewer, oh, and the Gulf, the Country Club Enterprise Fund as well. This enterprise fund would be slightly different, because it would still require a subsidy. We don't receive enough in revenue to support that program fully. But this would be a mechanism by which we could use, use the revenue again as it comes in. So as an example, we have to budget for the revenue, or we have to budget to purchase the bags that are then purchased by the, the stores that sell the bags, and then that revenue comes back, but it doesn't directly get spent. So this would allow us to, to use that revenue. And then if we were to make any changes in the future, we could really use this account to see, to have very, not that we don't have visibility, we do, but because it would be its own enterprise fund, it would show very clearly, you know, how if we were to make it sort of fully funded by users in the future, we would have the mechanism set up to do so. Again, this would require a subsidy, so the, the way that it would be voted at town meeting, there would be a portion of it that would still be funded through the levy. I think we had talked a lot, when we first started talking about waste management, about the revenue that we received and making sure that it doesn't, that the sort of move over to an enterprise fund doesn't negatively impact the levy, which it would not do, because the revenue that's received would now be into the enterprise fund and would just offset the expenses that are also moved into the enterprise fund, so it would be a wash. So it wouldn't result in any sort of net increase or decrease. We would estimate the enterprise fund's revenue and the fees that would go against it for the annual town meeting, and then we would likely come back in October and adjust it. So if additional revenues came in, we would adjust down the levy portion and increase the enterprise portion, which we've done, we did once before, that one time that we had anticipated needing to offset the Country Club Enterprise Funds, but then we're able to fully fund it through the fees.
Great, questions?
No, makes sense.
I think that last piece was good. I mean, I think we've seen stuff, and some, still some questions on the, our Stormwater Enterprise Fund and corresponding cuts. I think it's very, to be very clear, that that's not what we're looking for here, but it is a way to isolate, it's, it's for exactly what you said, expending it as the revenues come in, be able to expend it at the same time. But also, I think it allows embedded transparency, or easier transparency, I should say, but also for the future, that as we, help us make decisions if we want to potentially go to something that's more, either more funded or fully funded.
Yeah.
But yeah, people just be clear for folks that it's not something that's going to change kind of the levy today. We still have the expense, we still have the revenues, it's just kind of a bookkeeping thing at this point.
Right, so currently for fiscal '26, we're estimating $290,000 in revenue. Our budget is about $750,000, so we would anticipate using that $290,000 to offset the budget, and then the rest would be on the tax levy. If we are, again, if we're finding, once we get to October, that our revenues are coming in higher, then we would, we would reduce the levy portion and increase the enterprise fund portion.
Kristi, what did you say the budget is for?
I believe it's $750,000 in total.
750, ballpark, okay, yep.
Great. Any other questions on that?
Yeah, so Kristi, just to be clear, the, today, when money comes in from the bags, that goes into essentially the general fund?
Yes.
Yeah, so just, I know you said it comes in, but, so...
But then it rolls to free cash, the next.
Well, it, whatever's estimated offsets the levy.
Right.
And that was, again, that was a big concern, because we didn't want to sort of take that away from the estimated receipts and then increase the levy by creating the enterprise fund. And that, we actually met today for the second time with our representatives from the Department of Revenue to have these discussions. And we've met with myself, our Finance Director and Town Accountant, and we are clear on how this would all work, and how, and that it would not have an impact on this year's levy, and then going forward, it would be in the enterprise fund.
Okay. I think, just for the purpose of town meeting, this one's going to require really, really clear explanation, because...
Maybe a graph.
Lots of pictures, is all I'm going to say.
Zero, something.
Yeah, because I think that there, well, not I think, there are still lots of questions about the Stormwater Utility. Part of it might just be people don't like it, but there are still questions around, you know, what came out of the DPW budget to, for this, so that needs to be clear.
Yeah, so we'll have that.
I think it's the right way to go.
Sure.
Just to be clear.
Yeah, so we just met with DOR today, so we can, we'll get that together. But I think one sort of distinguishing factor I want to bring up between this and the Stormwater Utility is that, that the funds from, I know some of the, some of the input we've received about the Stormwater Utility is that the challenge is that everyone pays it, and so it just feels like an additional cost. That's the feedback, I think, that we've gotten. This one, the, the funding for this enterprise account would come from our two revenue sources, which is the bags that we sell, and then also the permit stickers that we sell.
Yep.
Great, anything else?
Yeah, I mean, I think the only thing here is, this is not going to show up as another line item on your tax bill.
No.
Right? That's when people think enterprise fund, now that's what they think. That is not what is happening here.
Yep. Thank you. Okay, moving on. Next on the agenda is approval of Reader Services Librarian Job Description, Job Description and Classification Update.
Library Director Kate Caraccio is here to present this one. You do have the proposed job description in your packet. You also have a copy of the current Circulation Supervisor Job Description.
Great.
Hi.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm excited to be back again, and I'll be here the next one, too. Get, steal out of my, gonna get sick of it. So yeah, I'll, I'll talk a little bit about this, if you're interested. So last time I was here, we were doing another classification change on another position that we had vacated, our local history librarian, which we regraded down to two library assistant positions. Those have since been filled, it has been really amazing, so thank you for that. At that meeting, I promised I'd be back again. Here we are, we had another vacancy. And as with all of our vacancies, what we really want to do is take a look at them at that point and say, is this what we need? How do we leverage this to fit all of our current needs? Because that's really the most cost-effective way to get all of our needs filled, instead of looking at additional positions. So, one of the things we were really lucky with about the Circulation Manager position is that the incumbent who actually left us was a professional, professional level librarian, but she was in a role that was not a professional librarian role. So we really lucked out, getting her expertise, getting everything that she brought to the position, being a Masters of Library Science level librarian. So there's that, and she left us, very sad about it. But she's on a big adventure, RVing through the country, so we're also very jealous of her. So what we did was, we took a step back and said, we've identified all of these gaps in what we need, in our five-year projection for what we need in terms of library services, how library services have changed. How do we take this position and fill some of those? I've had a lot of discussions with, with Kim and with Kristi in terms of what is my five-year plan in terms of staffing, what does it look like? What are my goals in terms of organization? And so what we did with this position was a little bit of that. So, the ask here is that we changed the job description from a Circulation Manager and kind of expanded the job requirements to a Reader Services Librarian. Part of this is because when we leveraged the local history librarian position, a lot of those tasks fell onto our Adult Services Librarian. We're also very lucky with her, she's a PhD. So she does a lot of really great local history work, she's taken it on, she has done an amazing job, but it hasn't left a lot of time for some of this stuff. And so we've really identified that this is kind of our most glaring gap, which also, consequently, marries really beautifully with this idea of a Circulation Manager, too. So someone who is really in charge of everything that we borrow. Some libraries will call it a Borrower Services Librarian, others call it a Reader Services Librarian. And for us, the way we've structured it is it's everything that the Circulation Manager was in charge of, so circulation, which is what we call our checkouts, how do we get books in people's hands, that's circulation. So managing all of those things, our day-to-day operations in terms of our service points, so that's Circulation Manager as well, and then adding another layer on top of that, which is programming, being focused on Reader's Advisory, running book groups, leading literacy-based programming, community events, also being in charge of our outreach efforts. So we have a small outreach team right now that does incredible work, and they kind of report directly up. And we're finding that we could really use somebody in charge of that to assist us in being able to do director tasks. So that's part of this position as well. So all of these additional things onto it. So the, in terms of the reclassification piece, it is at an N15, this is a union position. So it's at an N15. We are asking for a regate up to N17, which is the level with all of our other professional librarians. The other thing that happened when our local history librarian position was moved, was that this is also the only position left that isn't either a librarian or a library assistant. So it's kind of just out here on its own. And in terms of organizational structure, it makes it really hard to leverage that person in that position. So, I think I've gone through all the pieces. Any questions? I'm happy to go over anything else if I didn't. Oh, it's also budget neutral. I am so sorry, that's the most important part.
That's going to be my question, so...
It is budget neutral. Yeah, it's budget neutral, at least, at least through FY '26, possibly longer.
Can you explain why, just because people say, you're making a two-grade jump?
Yeah, so because this is a union position, and most of our non-union positions also work this way, it's on a step system. The person in that role was on a max step at the N15 level. At the N17 level, max step would put you at, I believe, a step five, and still be budget neutral.
There's enough overlap in the range that where the person, where we have budgeted for the prior employee allows us to go well into the range for the higher grade. So I've talked to Kate, and she anticipates that that is enough capacity to hire, to recruit and hire an employee.
Sean?
Thank you, Kate. So it, it sounds like, because you're looking for a Masters-level individual, that really the 17 is required, and the, the fact that your last individual had, that was a 15, was more of just luck, good fortune.
Yes, sheer luck, yes.
Okay, got it. Yeah, no, thank you, understood.
Alan? No questions, this makes sense.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I think that it makes a lot of sense. This is what we do with many positions, we take a fresh look at it. Obviously, being budget neutral helps your cause a lot through FY '26, not just the current budget, so. And would you anticipate going out to, this has to be bargained, though, right?
Yes.
Okay, but then you would anticipate going to hire, once that's, okay.
Yeah, it's been vacant for, I think, a few months now, and it is one that we feel every day in terms of service.
Sure. And then, just, I'm looking at the budget book, then, this person has about 12 library assistants reporting to them, is that correct?
So I believe we did not include, in one of the versions, they did. I don't know about the one that was sent to you. I don't know that we are...
No, so I'm, I'm referring to the, the actual budget book, the Circulation, so this person has people reporting to them.
So they don't have direct reports, they have, they are supervisory in terms of function.
Okay.
And the library assistants currently report to our Assistant Director.
Okay, all right.
So it's dotted line.
Okay, dotted line. Okay, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
Sure. Go ahead.
Moved to approve the Reader Services Librarian Job Description as presented, and further to add the position to the classification plan at grade N17, and to reduce the authorized position count under the Circulation Supervisor title from one to zero.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, all those in favor? It's unanimous for being present.
Thank you, and I also just wanted to say, I appreciate everybody's support for the mini-golf event we did. It was wonderful to see so many of you there, and you had a great time.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are, shouldn't say this.
Oh, don't do it.
I won't say it, but the next agenda item, do we know if Kelly was planning to show...
So Kelly's unable to attend. She, she was maybe sending someone, but I, I did tell her that we would probably take it up tonight if there were questions, and we could maybe push it off to another meeting when she could attend.
Okay. Why don't we go with it now?
Just have the discussion.
Have the discussion, yeah. So this is, Item 4 on our agenda, Request to Install Turquoise Table. Want it?
Sure.
Hit that, Kristi.
So I think the Board's familiar with the turquoise table, so it's a gathering point in the community, and I know that there was one at the, at the library or in front of the library. My understanding is that Westboro Connects has been approached by someone who's willing to, to make tables for them, to, to put around town, and so they reached out to request placement of a turquoise table in front of the Forbes Community Building, which is the building right next to the Burrows, Sugar Shack, and also, right, and also houses the food pantry, sorry. Initially, when the request was made, there was some concern about the proximity to the street and potential concerns around the traffic, so Westboro Connects did reach out to the police chief, who has, who, they had a discussion, and so you have in your packet an email from the, from the Chief of Police stating his, sort of, his approval, I guess, of, of the placement of the, the table there.
Great. I will open up for comments or questions.
Yeah, so I'm very supportive of this, I think turquoise tables are a great way to build community, even better that a private organization is willing to collaborate with the town to put it there. I appreciate that the Fire Chief has weighed in. I do think that it would be important... I do think that it would be important for the public just to read into the record the police chief's letter to the, or email to the town manager, so.
Do you want to read it?
Sure. So, this is dated from February 7th, from Tom Minardi to Town Manager Williams regarding Westboro Connect request turquoise table at Forbes Community Center. I recently had the opportunity to meet with Ms. Petriola to discuss the request from Westboro Connect regarding the placement of a turquoise table at the Forbes Community Center. Initially, I had some reservations about the proposal, primarily due to concerns that its placement might cause, create a distraction for motorists on East Main Street. Given the importance of maintaining safety in high-traffic areas, I felt it was necessary to carefully evaluate any potential risks associated with the installation. However, after a thorough discussion with Ms. Petriola and additional reflection, I no longer believe that the table will pose a significant distraction. We explored the intended purpose of the turquoise table, serving as a community-building space that fosters connection and engagement among residents. The initiative aligns with a broader mission of encouraging inclusivity and social interaction, which can be particularly valuable in public gathering spaces like the Forbes Community Center. Additionally, we discussed potential placement options to ensure that the table is both visible and accessible without interfering with pedestrian or vehicular safety. Given these considerations, I now support moving forward with the request, as I believe the benefits of strengthening community ties outweigh my initial concerns. I appreciate the opportunity to engage in this discussion. Best regards, Chief Minardi.
Great, thank you for reading that in. Any comments, further comments or questions?
Knowing that safety concerns have been addressed, I think it's a great idea, it's a great placement. It'll be a gathering spot, it'll enhance the borough program and the Sugar Shack next door, it'll enhance the use, when organizations are using the Forbes Community Center, there'll be a place to sit outside as well, in front on the little grassy area that's nice, and so I think it would be an enhancement to that area. I'm supportive of this.
Anything further? They want to make motion?
Sure. I move to support the placement of a turquoise table in front of the Forbes Community Building at 9 East Main Street.
Second? They moved and seconded. All those in favor? Four to zero for being present. Thank you. Next on our agenda is Public Works Union fiscal year '26 to fiscal year 2028 collective bargaining agreement. So, as we at the board are well aware, but for the public, that the town and DPW Union has successfully completed negotiations for a successor agreement for, as noted, the period fiscal year 2026 to fiscal year 2028. The collective bargaining agreement that was in our package reflects all the amendments approved by the parties. For the public, let me just read in some of the highlights from this contract. So, first off, provides a $300 referral bonus when a new hire identifies a member of the bargaining unit as to how he or she learned about the job opportunity. The annual clothing allowance will increase from the current $900 to $1,000 in fiscal year '26, $1,050 in fiscal year 2027, and $1,100 in fiscal year 2028. Emergency overtime performed during the hours from 1:00 AM to 5:00 AM shall be paid at a double time rate, and it provides a $150 annual meal allowance. On the wages side, the cost of living adjustments in each of the three contract years shall be 2.5%. Additionally, market adjustments in contract years one and two shall add a new top step to two-grade classifications, those being W-4 and W-5. Also, license stipends were increased and expanded as follows. Employees who possess a valid commercial driver's license, or CDL, shall receive a $400 annual stipend, and shall additionally be entitled to receive $150 per license or license endorsement annually for other licenses approved by the DPW director, up to a maximum of $1,000 total per year. These other stipends will be provided for the following. Arborist certification, electrician. Up to two employees may be designated to serve as departmental CDL trainers responsible for on-the-road training, classroom training, record-keeping, and sponsoring candidates on their road tests. The DPW director may assign a master mechanic to serve as a lead mechanic with a $2,500 annual stipend. Also, the contract expands current drug testing language to add post-accident and reasonable suspicion drug testing language. So, is there a? Yes.
Yay.
And I appreciate the work done on the town side, but as well with the union to come to the successful agreement. I think, speaking on behalf of the board, that we believe it's a fair contract for them, and likewise, they have agreed. So, is there a motion?
Sure. I move to approve and execute the collective bargaining agreement between the town of Westboro and the DPW Union, SEIU Local 888, for the period fiscal year 2026 through fiscal year 2028 as presented.
Second. Any further comments, questions? Not all those in favor? It's four to zero for being present. Next on our agenda is Hakamaka Pond Committee Discussion. Board Member Marshall?
Sure.
So, as this board is aware, we created the Hakamaka Pond Reuse Committee to evaluate the potential reuse purposes of that location, and the committee has met regularly, for the most part, over the past couple of years, it seems. I don't have the dates in front of me, but it's been a couple of years, up until recently, and I say up until recently because the, we were, we recently found out through the state's evaluation, basically Mass DEP, and their five-year evaluation, that there was an odor in the building, and that was detected, as well as there were some observations of the site that were concerning to our conservation director, certainly to our town manager, to me as chair, and that were shared with the committee. So, it is my recommendation at this point that this board disband the committee. I think that the reason for disbanding it is that after reviewing the five-year plan, discussing with the conservation director, the safety concerns have not been addressed to the town's satisfaction at this point in terms of opening it up for reuse, and without progress and participation from Mass DEP and Mass EPA, and with an active dialogue with respect to responsibility to forward-looking costs, it makes no sense for this particular committee to continue to meet. So, I do want to say that our conservation director is needing, continuing an open dialogue with the EPA and Beazer, which was the remediation company, that organization, relative to the Oda Street project that is underway because that project borders, so there is ongoing discussion, but it is really, that discussion is really very focused on that particular intersection of the property. So.
So, just a follow-up question if I can, Shelby. So, this is, as you just said, it's disbanding the committee, but there's still work going on, it's just town staff will be continuing to the work on that at this time.
So, to be clear, the town's work, and Kristi, correct me if I'm misspeaking here, will be specifically related to the Oda Street corridor project, not to the reuse of Hakamaka this time? We would really be, by disbanding it, we would effectively be tabling any further discussion around opening that up until a future point in time?
Correct, but anything that came up with EPA or Beazer that needed, it would be the town, we don't, it won't be the committee.
That is correct, we don't need a committee to do that.
Correct. And then, I think in our notes, there was some funding for further studies, so as part of this would be to release those.
Right, right. So, for the public's awareness, the, at a prior town meeting a couple of years ago, the Hakamaka Committee requested funding for some various work, LSP work, some survey work, et cetera, and the recommendation would be that that money be returned back to the town. I mean, not that the committee is holding the money, just to be clear.
But just to release it from?
Correct. Release it from that article, thank you, thank you.
The article was sponsored by the committee, though, right?
Yes, it was.
Yeah, so I think that you probably want the committee to vote on that.
Okay.
Let me confirm that.
Okay.
I'm supportive of disbanding it.
That's fine, that's probably the proper way to do it, yeah.
So, go ahead.
So, to simplify this, the five-year review indicates that we thought it was safe to start reusing public access to the property, but it might not be. So, now, DEP and EPA have to figure out what, if anything, would ever happen or need to be done so that it could be reused safely, and until that point in time, there's no point in having a committee discussing what we want to do with the property.
In essence, yes.
And DP and EPA should be looking at this, but there's no commitment on timeframe from them. It's indefinite.
That is correct, and it's been very difficult to have them see our concern based on the five-year review, which, as a note to self, I need to make sure that gets updated to the Hakamaka webpage, which I have not done. I will do that.
The five-year review?
Is it there?
It's there.
Oh, thank God, okay, I did that.
Of course you did, you still remember.
I just did. So, it is there for anyone that wants to review, it's a public document, and it's been available.
So, if I look at our tender, if I look at the motion that was in our packet, I think, I'm looking to Kristi here, I think that we might be able to do that motion, because the motion was just to request, request the committee to release the funds.
Yeah.
So, I think we can still do the motion to request that, the committee can do that, I don't know that then it would have to come back in front of us.
Okay.
No, and then you would just disband the committee following that meeting.
Yeah.
Which you could do right now.
We could do right now, too.
Okay.
So, if you want to?
And sorry, so currently, there is no timeline for review and determination on the site, so there's?
Yeah, we're continuing to work with EPA and DEP, but there's a lot of questions that they need to answer in terms of what needs to be done, who's responsible, and so we're sort of working through that with staff. Yeah, there's no specific timeline.
Yeah, got it. So, no point in sort of suspending the operations of the committee, let's just stick a fork?
They've kind of been in a holding pattern for several months because of this, so I think it's just more effective to disband it now, and then in the future, when we're ready, probably put together another.
Exactly, that's how I'd say it.
And the hope would be that it could be used for past recreation, it really is a beautiful, in our lifetime, maybe, so. I will not be chair of the committee at that point, so.
So, you think.
So, can I have a motion?
Yes. I move to request the Hakamaka Pond Reuse Committee to release the funds previously allocated for reuse of the site, and further to then disband the Hakamaka Pond Reuse Committee. Second.
Okay. All those in favor? It's four to zero for being present, thank you, Shelby.
Yeah, so, those are probably, that motion will be in our minutes, but if you could shoot that over to me so that I can pull the committee together and have that meeting, that would be great, thanks.
The motion that you voted on?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, fiscal year 2026 budget and warrant discussion. Take it back to Town Manager.
So, this, the purpose of having this agenda item on here is to sort of follow up from the discussion that, and vote that you took at the budget summit, which was related to the reduction in the FY '26 budget as currently proposed. So, the select board at the budget summit voted to, to request a reduction of 1% inclusive of fixed costs, so that 1% is about 1.3 million, and that was a proportional reduction, so town, school, fixed costs, all included. Following that meeting, we did have a finance team meeting. Finance team is an internal meeting with folks, with the chair of the select board, the finance committee and the school committee, as well as staff. We talked further about that, and then, and then after following that meeting, both the finance committee and the school committee at their own separate meetings were able to discuss that motion, the vote that this board took at the budget summit. The finance team met again yesterday morning, and the discussion at that point was a request of the Advisory Finance Committee to give sort of clear direction to both the school committee and the select board. And so, last night when they met, they voted to request a 1% reduction in the budget exclusive of the debt budget, and so 1.3 million exclusive of any reduction that will be, that may be recognized when we go to borrow. And, and so, you have in your packet the memo that was sent by the chair of the Advisory Finance Committee articulating that, that vote that was taken by the Advisory Finance Committee last night, and that went to this board as well as the school committee.
So, I think at this point, it's really up for us for discussion on that request. So, I'll open it up.
Well, the other thing I just want to point out is, from the chair of the Advisory Finance Committee, they also excluded from consideration the impact of unsettled union contracts.
Yeah, so, there was a, there was a question, I don't think it came up at the budget summit, so I don't know that the board has had the opportunity to discuss it yet, but there was a question that I had, because we know that we have unsettled union contracts, and we know that those will likely result in a budget adjustment. And so, the question was, you know, is there, is the 1% reduction on the current budget as proposed, is it expecting an additional offset to any increases that will be, that will result from settled union contracts, or is it a 1% reduction on whatever the budget is at the time when it is inclusive of certain union contracts? So, the finance committee did not include that in their vote, but they did have a very clear discussion when I asked the question, and so it is exclusive of any increases that may result from settled union contracts.
And insurance budget reductions could be included in the 1%?
Yes.
Okay. Just so we know the boundaries.
And I think additionally, the chair of the Advisory Finance Committee then divided up what they felt that meant on the town side versus the school side for us, and it looks like at 1%, you know, they're looking at, for the town side, a little under $300,000 is what they're asking of us, if I understand that correctly.
It was a 75-25 split, sorry?
Yeah, so, what we looked at was if you take the two town operating budgets and the school operating budgets, we're about 25% of that total, understanding that any reductions in the insurance budget would be proportioned out equally, so it's 25-75 with the school and the town.
Could you say those numbers again, just, show them what you just said, sorry, I mean, I get the percentages?
So, the budget, not including debt, is 117. So, we're roughly a quarter of that, so just under 30 million.
Mm-hmm.
And then, asking for 1% of 30 million would be 300,000, roughly, a little less than that, but, yeah.
Correct. What do folks think? Actually, I'll ask a question. Kristi, from the Town Manager's side, any comments or thoughts?
No. I, I mean, I think it's, you know, what we asked for at the budget summit, and then I went to both of the Advisory Finance Committee meetings, and, you know, I think we presented a level service budget, which is what we believe there are the services of the town is requested of the staff, both on the town and school side, and so, any clear direction on what level of cut you're looking for is helpful. So, to the extent that this board is, can sort of be aligned with the Advisory Finance Committee, that's. Committee, that's even more helpful, because I know there was discussion at the finance team meeting about the importance of that alignment with both those two boards, but also the school committee, which has not met since, obviously, since this memo has come out.
Yeah, I would just add to that, as, as folks, we've talked about it numerous times, on this board, the expectation that we've heard loud and clear from the town is that they expect, as we come to town meeting, that especially these three boards, that we've worked together, had discussions, and kind of present, you know, that we're not debating things for the first time at town meeting floor, that we've, we've worked together and discussed it. So to that point, as Kristy just said, I think having us aligned is something that I think is the expectation of the community. So I guess, and my take is, if folks think this request, and I, and I will say it is, maybe it's semantics, whatever, but in there, it's, it's the first line is asking for this with reduced spending for consideration, so it's not saying it's, it's really, let's put it out there and have the discussion at this point in time. I'll give my two cents. I mean, I, I think from that meeting, it's close to what I said. I could argue that you include debt in there. I think I did at that meeting, but at this point, based on what they said, and to be unified, I would be comfortable with what the request that came back from the finance committee was. To me, it's close enough to move things forward.
So I'm, I'm comfortable aligning our direction, the town budget direction, with what's been outlined, and what was voted by AFC, and what's been outlined by Walter Leslie, as chair of the AFC. I, I think it's important, you know, there've been many, many conversations over the last couple of weeks about how big the budget should be and what's there, knowing that we're starting, we started this process with a level service budget. You know, my question always is back, okay, if you're looking for us to cut, provide guidance. We're your representatives here. We represent the entire community. What are the priorities of things that shouldn't be cut? What are? Out of all of those conversations, I have yet to have anyone say that they're, that they think something's low enough a priority that they would want to see it cut. So I still think it's a good exercise to look at the recommendations from department heads and the Town Manager's office, and, and if they, you know, say, if we're going to do this, this is where we'd recommend it, having the least, because it'll have the least impact on the community as a whole, although it will very clearly impact specific departments and specific services throughout the town. That provides the voters and people who will attend town meeting with the information necessary to make an informed decision. And so I'm, I'm supportive of aligning at this level. I'm, I'm comfortable with the debt not being part of the 1%, knowing that the 1%, if we looked at the current estimate of the average single-family tax bill, it would go from where it is, it would still be above $800 a year, so if debt comes in lower, in March, it'll reduce a little further, maybe get us below that threshold, also knowing that we don't yet have a number of union contracts settled. We don't yet know what our Q4 receipts are, and what our certified free cash will be at the end of the year. We do not know what state levels, you know, this is the stuff that comes in after a town meeting, right? We don't know, you know, what state funding's going to be, chapter, you know, general, you know, local aid, chapter 70, chapter 90, until the budget is done, and hopefully before October 1st, right? And so it's worthwhile, I know it's a lot of work for staff, and I appreciate that, and it's, it's painful discussion, and it makes department heads and staff nervous. And it's a worthwhile, it's a worthwhile pursuit.
Other comments?
Go ahead. So I won't, won't repeat anything anyone's already said, and I agree with all of it. I would just add that, again, from my experience, since this has been brought up, we hear a lot about what the tax rate is. I've heard sort of crickets on what's been proposed, so it's interesting to me. I guess I'll just say that, and by crickets, I mean kind of in social media land, as well as people reaching out to me. So I would have, I guess I, I really presume people would be like, way to go. This is, this is what we asked for, and I'm not hearing that at all. I'm actually hearing the opposite. So we'll have to see, and Alan, you made the point of, you know, it's putting hands in the, excuse me, putting information in the hands of the voters so that they can be prepared at town meeting. However, all of our boards come together with the recommendations. So that's, that's what we're doing here. I, I just want to go on record that I, I think it's very important that from, in terms of any budget that I support going forward, that I will not support a cuts on the town side that aren't equally reflected on the school side in some way. So I just want to be clear that this is a town, capital T, I always use that. It's not town, little t, like on the, whatever the cell side of the street, wherever we are. So I just, I think that that's, it's very important that I convey that position. May not be a popular one with many, but I do think that we need to operate as one town, and if we're going to feel some pain, then we're going to all feel it.
Well said. Thank you. Sean?
Thank you. I, I know this was voted upon at, at last night's Advisory Finance Committee meeting, but it had been brought up before that. We brought it up at the budget summit. Similar discussions at last Wednesday's school committee meeting, towards the end, if folks were watching that, they did address this and asked the superintendent to just come forth with some review at, at certain different levels, a half percent, 1%. So I, I appreciate that the, the school committee is looking at this and, and just asking, I guess, to, for the superintendent to represent what this would mean. So sort of doing that same exercise. So, so I'm comfortable with this. I don't know that I, I want the research to be so specific that we are singling out anybody. I think sort of generally understanding, you know, I, I don't know, but.
I, I mean, I don't want to interrupt you, but this is something I said.
No, go ahead.
I feel like the Advisory Finance Committee had a similar concern, and so, you know, I appreciate that, that folks are understanding that this is, you know, this is difficult for staff to hear, and, and they're all, you know, everyone's nervous because of what this might mean, so. But, but what I did say to the finance committee, and I'll say here, is that, you know, I, I don't, I don't know how the superintendent intends to present cuts, but here, on the, on sort of our side of the street, we have very small departments, so it would be impossible to present what a cut would look like without being clear about which positions would be impacted. That being said, it, to the extent that we are talking about union positions, that would need to be discussed initially in executive session, so I just want to be clear about that.
Yeah, and, and I think, so Sean, I, like emotionally, I absolutely agree with what you're saying. I also think that the part of this is that the public needs to understand what that impact can be, and I trust our, our staff on both sides of the street to paint a realistic picture of what that means to the kind of end-user experience, whether you're, you know, 80 years old or you're eight years old.
Yeah.
And, you know, that's, that's the painful reality of where we're at, and I do appreciate the work that's going into this and, and, you know, the openness. I, can I just say one more point that we did talk about at the budget summit, that I want to make sure we don't lose sight of, because I, I still think that there's opportunity, and that is our board working with the school committee to identify efficiencies in various areas. So I just want to make sure that that, I know we're not going to be able to resolve that for the FY26 budget, but if there are ways to address purchasing, or, you know, custodians, or what, I don't know, whatever those ideas are, just, I'm very supportive of that, and I think this board is, and just want to continue to push that message forward.
Just to sort of piggyback on that, I don't think that, I don't think it's impossible that some of these efficiencies that we might identify would impact the fiscal 26 budget. It just wouldn't happen in a timeframe where we could, where I think we could articulate exactly what those are and what the savings would be before the March town meeting.
Yeah, good point.
Great. Anything else on that? I don't, it sounds like we're in agreement. I don't know that we need a vote here, but the takeaway and?
Actually, you probably should, just because you already voted the other.
Okay.
We don't have a draft motion.
I would, I would suggest it's a, it's a move to support the recommendation as per the Advisory Finance Committee.
So I, I move that the select board support the recommendation from the Advisory Finance Committee in looking for reductions in the fiscal year 26 budget of approximately 295,000, representing 1% of the town's apportioned, apportionment of the entire operating budget for the town. And further, that we request Town Manager and department heads' assistance in doing that analysis.
I'll second that.
Okay, any further comments or questions? All those in favor? Four to zero. Thank you, Kristy. The work so far in advance for you and the staff, it's, I know it's not easy.
Thank you. Just related to the warrant, just because we're here, I just wanted to note that I did receive an email that Article 20 is being withdrawn. That is the article related to, from Sustainable Westboro. That was a vote of the committee to withdraw that and to continue their work with the Community Development Director. And then I also wanted to note that we did receive a citizens petition, and, and I don't have it with me, so I might get the wording wrong, but it essentially is a non-binding, non-binding, non-binding citizens petition related to the request that budgets don't, do not increase more than 2.5%, including, including new growth. But you, but that, the actual wording of that will be on the next version of the warrant.
Can you just repeat it, just paraphrasing what you just said, Kristy?
That budgets not increase more than 2.5%, including new growth. And that's, that's, that's consistent with Prop 2.5 for, for communities that are at their levy limit.
Right, okay.
So I haven't seen it yet, and I may should hold up. It's not 2.5% on each budget, it's 2.5% total?
2.5% total, yeah. I mean, I, I don't think you should take it up right now. I just wanted you to know that we've received a petition, and I probably shouldn't even try to paraphrase it.
No, that's fine.
But that's essentially the, the warrant article.
Can I ask procedurally, so it's a non-binding article, where are we having, I mean?
It's more of a sense of the meeting. It's not specific. I don't.
So it'd be forward-looking anyway?
Right, right.
To see if that's something that we may want to take as
Guidance.
Guidance from the town meeting, if they. It was interesting, because it's very close to our old policy request.
Right, so yours was 2% excluding new growth. This includes new growth, I believe, similar to Prop 2.5, yeah.
Anything further on this? If not, this is somewhat related, but our next agenda item is the Municipal Empowerment Act, and discussion of support on that. To you.
Yeah, so last year, the administration filed the Municipal Empowerment Act bill, and there were several items within it that communities were very interested in. This year, they are refiling the bill because there were several sections that didn't move forward, so that bill has been refiled. I think that it would be, when I was at the Mass Municipal Association Annual Conference, there was discussion about the need for communities to be supportive of the bill, obviously, if we wanted it to pass, and to sort of partner with the administration. One of the reasons that I think that we should discuss it now is because there's local option taxes within it. And, just trying to pull it up. So it would be an additional increase to the meals tax, and then also an additional increase to the hotel motel tax. So if the, if the board is supportive, we could send a letter of support for that portion. Doesn't have to be immediately, if you don't, if you're not ready. There are several sections of the Municipal Empowerment Act.
Do, well, there, oh, go ahead, sorry.
And just to be clear, the act gives the town the option to consider increasing. It doesn't force us, it doesn't say, oh, these are, are going to increase.
That's right.
It gives us flexibility.
Right.
Those would have to be approved at town meeting, right? To accept.
Yeah, yeah, I believe so, because the original meals tax was town meeting.
Town meeting, yeah.
This is, in going through this, I mean, it's a really, it, there's just a mixed bag of all these different things they've put in here. It, it, in, in some way, they're probably all useful. I, I guess this is sort of seeing government in action, where kind of, you know, instead of trying to do these things individually, or in, in chunks that make sense, they're putting together something that, you know.
It's similar, yeah. The Baker administration did the Municipal Modernization Act, or the Municipal Modernization Bill, or something, so similarly looking at ways that communities could function better, yeah.
Yeah, I would just recommend to folks, if, if you're interested, take a look at this. Some of these things I was a little surprised to see.
Yeah.
Expanding municipality's ability to reduce school bus service costs by repealing a law that limits districts' ability to start in-house school bus services when private transportation companies are available. I was like, that's, we don't, I was surprised to hear that towns can't create their own, their own school bus service. I mean,
Right.
So, I mean, obviously, that's not us, but, for us, but that, that's sort of the type of things that are in here. I do fully support the two articles that, that you have mentioned to us. I think those make a lot of sense. And there are other parts in here, but I guess, I don't know that we go through and pick and choose a response.
Yeah, I guess, what, what are you looking for? Because I agree, I mean, looking through it, and I don't have the expertise, but, I mean, there could be things like regional boards of assessors, or
Yeah, so
changes to post.
Specifically, those two local option taxes, given that our discussion around, around the budget and the impact to the taxpayer.
But I guess the other question, there's some stuff about OPEB, so the, the other, and I don't know what those are without in detail, but those could be things that potentially could
I mean
help us. I don't know what they are, though.
Sure.
Well, when do you, when do you need, like, what's the timing around this?
I mean, they've just filed it, I think, last week, or refiled it last week.
So
Since the MMA sends out proposed sort of letters of support.
Yeah.
I anticipated that the board would only really be prepared on those two local option. I mean, we could certainly, if there's other sections that you want us to present on, we can do that at a future meeting, or if there's more that you want to understand about the local option taxes, we could do it at a future meeting. I think, just in general, I think this is responsive to what we're hearing about the budget impact, and so it's certainly, you know, it's certainly reasonable if you want to look into it more for the local option taxes, but if, if you're ready, you know, you could vote support, and then, what I don't want to do is send a letter of support if the board is not supportive.
Yeah, of course.
So which, which of the two, which two of the three local option taxes, because there's three?
Right.
There are three, yeah.
There's the motor vehicle excise surcharge.
I don't like that one.
Yeah, I don't like that.
And then
Yeah.
lodging and meals.
Yeah, lodging and meals.
I think the lodging and meals is a thing I would be supportive of. We have it, it allows us to raise some excise taxes, increasing our taxes for our residents. I don't.
Yeah. Although, although
I said, when we first created those revenue opportunities in town, did those go before town meeting?
I wasn't here then, but I believe so.
I think that's good.
I think they had to, right.
So, anything, so those things would have to be also approved by town meeting, okay.
I mean, there are some other things in here, I guess, where I was going is, Kristi, do we ultimately want to bring this, like, potentially respond to the meals tax and the hotel tax now, and then revisit other things like, you know, updating borrowing rules for school projects? You know, there are other things in here that, or the OPEB, I mean, OPEB, supporting prevention of drug overdoses by ensuring anyone who administers fentanyl strips or protect, I mean, there's, there's a lot of random stuff in here, Sean, to your point.
Senior tax, additional senior tax.
Yeah, there feels like there's other things that we should be commenting on, or better understand, but is it better to submit multiple letters of support, or just one big letter of support?
Well, why don't we, if you want sort of more information about the other pieces, then why don't we just wait, and we can
Okay.
Because we can
We need time.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you want us to email you, like, our particular interests? Would that be helpful?
Sure, yeah.
Okay. Or where we might need more information, because some of the wording's a little
Exactly.
And there's a lot online as well, that we can pull together.
Okay.
So we need to give you a little feedback.
Yep.
That's helpful.
I'm sure there's also just a link to the whole thing.
There is, but there's also, I think it's in here, the section by section.
Five hundred pages, probably.
Yeah.
But it's also, some of that is like, in this paragraph, strike these words and add these words, and
Put it through AI and tell you, give me, summarize this, two paragraphs.
What do you think?
Okay.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Perfect. Moving on, next on the agenda is a request to appoint Wendy Comey to the cultural council.
So I would move to approve the appointment of Wendy Comey to the cultural council for a term to expire June 30, 2027.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Thank you, Wendy.
Four to zero, for being present. Okay, next, we have meeting minutes for January 15th, 16th, 28th, and 29th. Intend a motion to however anybody wants to approve them, whether individually or en masse.
I move to approve the meeting minutes of January 15th, 2025, January 16th, 2025, January 28th, 2025, and January 29th, 2025, as presented.
Second.
Okay, any discussions or corrections, errors, or omissions? All those in favor? Okay, four to zero.
Thank you, Seaweed.
Thank you.
Hey, town manager, report.
I'm sorry, I didn't have that printed for you, but I do have a report. So upcoming meetings are February 25th, at the regular select board meeting. We had talked about a potential for a proposed tri-board meeting, but I think it sounds like there's more discussion to be had before we, we do that. And then, on March 11th, we have our, our regularly scheduled first meeting in March, but that's also election day, so if the board wants to reschedule, we could meet on that Monday or Wednesday.
How does that work? Well, if it were on election day, I guess.
It can be on election day, I just didn't know if, sometimes we've rescheduled it when it's on election day, just the planning board can't hold certain public hearings on election day.
If we stay on the 11th or move to the 10th, I'm here, if it's on the 12th, I am not.
Oh, let's make him be here.
So does the 10th at your regular time work?
The 10th works for me.
Okay. We'll just have to figure out the location, because I think the finance committee also meets here on Mondays.
March 10th.
Others?
I think it works, hold on.
Oh, I'm good.
Sorry, hang on one second.
Yeah, February.
I know, I know, too many, too many calendars. I am not available on the 10th, but you guys can meet without me. I have a work commitment.
So, I mean, we could still meet on the 11th.
Right, you could.
How does that work with, oh, I guess the election isn't
Polls don't close until eight, right?
Okay, yeah.
And then the election isn't certified until later.
I can send something out, because we can schedule meetings via email, that way Patrick can be part of the discussion.
Exactly, let's do it that way. I'm fine with the 11th, too.
Yeah, still the 11th.
And then
Technically
Until eight o'clock.
Well, no, no, technically, my term doesn't end until my successor is sworn in.
Which won't happen until at least the next
Morning.
Oh, so we can just not have someone sworn in, perfect. That's the strategy.
You'll never leave.
Just kidding, just kidding. Welcome, everyone.
Alan, I'm going to write you in.
Better not leave me.
Related to the legal budget, I attended the advisory finance committee meeting last night, and requested an additional $120,000 to cover legal, the legal budget through the annual town meeting. Will also seek another article for additional funding for fiscal '25. As I explained to the finance committee last night, that's due to, the overcharge, the overage is due to cost related to current litigation. When we set the budget, we don't budget for litigation, because we don't know sort of what to expect, and so, this, the budget has gone over. And they did approve that reserve fund request. So they will also likely be using the placeholder article to replenish their reserve fund. I also met with Westboro TV last week to discuss a draft agreement between Westboro TV and the town. And, as well as the funding need to support operations due to the reduction in cable subscribers, so the agreement will be reviewed by town council, will likely come before the board for consideration at your February 25th meeting. There does remain an article on the warrant to fund that as well. We have discussed this with the Department of Revenue, in terms of mechanisms and the wording for the town meeting article. Related to the Regional Emergency Communications Center, the Board of Directors and Operations Committee, we meet on a weekly basis, our meetings are public and they are posted. So the project will be presented this month to Westboro's permitting departments at a one-stop meeting. And following the one-stop meeting, we will have another public information meeting in March. Additional work being done to stand up the district is the application for the district's own tax ID number, acceptance of law in order to become part of the Worcester Regional Retirement System, negotiation of the district lease, and development of a district logo. Finally, the executive director position has been posted as of today, and will remain open until filled, and that's posted on Westboro's website, as well as, it'll be posted on others, so it's posted through Westboro on behalf of the district. Also, Chief Purcell is coordinating with the design team and working on the application for funding in the next state N1 grant round, which is anticipated to fund the construction phase of the project. Department head updates, the health department, the town, along with the Greater Borough's Partnership for Health, received the Kenneth E. Pickard Municipal Innovation Award for a commitment to health equity, advancing public health standards and community services. So that's the regional group that we are a part of, that each of the towns within it received that innovation award. In the police department, the three student officers from Lynnfield Academy will graduate on the 28th and begin their 12-week field training program. Of the two conditional job officers, job offers mentioned last month, Patrick Scanlon, a student officer at Quinn Sigeman Community College. Police Academy has been hired and is set to graduate in May, the second offer was rescinded following a background investigation. We have secured $100,000 grant from the Central Region Homeland Security Advisory Council to purchase the Faro 3D laser scanner, which was previously requested but denied in the fiscal '26 capital plan. In public works, recent forecasted snow is good news, however, on February 7th, the central region was moved back into critical drought status. Over the last month, rainfall totals for most of the state were eight to three inches below normal. Operator training was recently completed for the regional purchased drain and sewer pipe camera house with South Row DPW, that's something that came before this board. This camera will be a valuable tool for pipe investigation this summer and beyond. Over the next several weeks, DPW staff will complete work zone safety and chainsaw training sponsored by Maya, which is our insurance company. And then the DPW recently took possession of a new sweeper truck, which was funded by annual town meeting 2022.
Wow.
Three years.
Yeah, and that completes my report.
Great, thank you. Okay, issues and correspondence of the select board. Alan, you want to start us off?
I have nothing specific this evening.
Okay, Shelby.
Yes, one second. Kristi, did you or Kim just want to give an update to the board on the, just the director, where we're at with the interview process, just?
We're in the interview process.
Okay, okay, all right, okay, I know, I know we can't really talk about it, but the senior center services director, that's actively in process, so
Yeah.
Can't say much more, so, so that's great. Just want to acknowledge that the board has recently received some interest in emails around sidewalks and clearing of snow, whose responsibility is it? What sidewalks does the town clear? And I appreciate the town manager being responsive to those emails. I would just say, while we don't have a requirement to clear sidewalks, if you're able, please do it, you know, if you have a service clearing your driveway, ask them to do your sidewalk, it's just a good thing to do, being neighborly. I do think at some future point, this board should probably take it up again and see, you know, kind of what our, our position is on it, and in recognizing that some people just, for a number of reasons, can't get out and clear their sidewalks, but they, they are there for the betterment of everyone, and we'd like to be able to use them year round. The Act of Transportation Safety Committee met yesterday, I was able to attend about, I think, a half hour or so after the meeting had started. I think the great news was that there's been some significant work done by our assistant town planner in working toward identifying opportunities for the CMRCP grant for bike racks around town. So there's a collaborative assessment she's undertaken to kind of identify areas, she asked ATSC for input there, she showed us pictures of what those look like, and basically, the, my understanding is the grant would cover the installation, cover the procurement of the racks themselves, and installation would be done by DPW. Oh, do you have a question?
Question on that?
Yep.
Are locations being looked at, are those inclusive of the locations that were specifically identified in the Complete Streets prioritized project list?
I'll be honest with you, Alan, I don't know if that was specifically mentioned, I want to say yes, but I will follow up on that.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. She named a number of different sources she was pulling from, but I will Let me just make a note. Okay. During that meeting, there was extensive discussion, well, about B-Walt, there was a gentleman who spoke about the friends and trying to stand that up, that group up, and, you know, I will say, I was really surprised, and this sort of goes to a larger conversation I think our board has to have and will have, so I'm trying to thread the needle here on not debating or discussing this, but at our joint meeting with the planning board, I thought it was a great meeting, there was a lot of public input, and I felt like as a board, we walked away with a fresh sense of kind of the community's interest in this project. I also left with not knowing kind of who has the ball. Are we going to own it as a select board, or is the planning board going to own this project, understanding that it's extensively within the hands of our town staff? At the meeting yesterday, I learned that there, the town planner has applied for, and this was stated in open forum, has applied for a grant through the Mass Trails. Now, those timelines, as we, those grants have very specific timelines, as we know, and so, understand that a decision was made to apply for the grant. I think this is a great example of where the challenge lies with, we didn't give specific direction at that joint meeting as to what's happening next, and I think it's imperative that this board and the planning board, either through the chair and vice chair, very quickly get a handle on that, because there is a cost component to that grant, and, you know, we're having these discussions about budgets, and we're having these discussions about potentially staff cuts, and so, we have to take a look at the projects themselves and understand kind of what stresses are those putting on a system where we may be reducing headcount. So, I was surprised and, and that we had submitted for the grant, I don't know a lot about it, I wish I did, I did watch the planning board meeting from the February 4th, and the planning board was very clear in that meeting that they felt that their role was around site plan evaluation, easement, sharing information about B-Walt, and there may be one, one other thing, but it was not owning this project. So, if this board is going to own the project and give direction to our town manager, we got to give that serious consideration, because if it's really with the town planner, and we don't oversee that town planner, like, who has it? Who has the ball? And I'm, I'm starting to feel like, I was, I already had questions, and I'm starting to feel very uncomfortable with where this project is at right now, not that I'm not supportive of it, and not that I don't want to see it go forward, but just how it's, the execution of it, and, so, we got to get our hands around that, sorry, that was a very long diatribe about it. I, I will also say that I did share with the Act of Transportation Safety Committee that at a future board meeting, we would be likely taking up the kind of future state of that committee. And, they, they pushed back a little bit, to say the least, on their role, but again, it centered around B-Walts, it wasn't around all the other things that I think this board, I know this board expects them to do, and so, to me, that's even more reason why we need to take a hard look at that charge and the future of that committee. Because, again, they love B-Walt, that's wonderful, but they're not the B-Walt committee. And, and again, but I do want to applaud the assistant town planner for the work she's doing, her addition was evident with that bike rack project, but it's, it's broken. So, anyway, sorry for the very long rambling.
Sean.
You're up, Sean.
Okay, next, library building committee met earlier today. Couple things there, we're starting to get back bids on some of the components of the project, on average, they're coming in below our initial estimates we received, so that's a positive sign. There are still many bids, and the process doesn't close for another week, so, but, current trending is good. Additionally, there will need to be another warrant article added for an easement for the, not a warrant article?
I don't think so. Usually, usually we can incorporate it into the library.
Into the article. Okay, so we may be tweaking the language on the article. Okay, thank you very much, Kristi. And so, positive developments, one component concerns too strong, something that came up, so the choice of relocation is the, is the community center, the first floor, the community center. The fire department and building department have been over there with them a couple of times to review the space, there are concerns about the fire alarm and the fire protection system, really, it hasn't been used in a while on the first floor. There, it may require some investment, and so I guess the, the discussion around that is, is there a small amount that can be paid to get that up and running while the library is there? Or, if it's work that's going to have to be done, and it's maybe a little bit more than that, do we just get it done? So, just, the more follow-up, they're going to bring somebody in to sort of help them assess exactly what needs to be done, I don't know that, they're presenting in front of us at our next meeting, I don't know they have those answers at that meeting, we want to make sure they try to have them before town meeting.
I just want to be really clear that this, this, all of these meetings are happening, but we also have our public works director, who's responsible for that facility, who is, is aware of these and is also working, so I just am hoping that the discussions are
are looping him in as the building, essentially the building owner. And, and I know that there was a question about sort of who's responsible for paying, and, I mean, ultimately, my response was, it all comes out of the general fund levy, so.
Right.
And to that point, there's no identification of cost. So, you know, I think the library always anticipated a building fit up, even if it was renting, which would be sunk costs, because we would leave that building, and now, you know, there's, there's some level of fit up to this building.
Yes, yes. And the, and the thought is, want to do what's right, so it's not throwaway work, right? If, if that's possible, but yes, they are including that individual, I understand somebody's out currently, but, but they are following up with the town. So that was what I had on that. And then finally, I think this, in general, the town, town citizens that have had a tough start to 2025, we talked at our last meeting, we lost Earl Story just this past Saturday. We also lost Michael Beretti, senior. Worked with him on the advisory finance committee, services are later this week, pardon me.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Sean, and I was going to say the same thing, but I appreciate you saying that. Yeah, it has been a tough week. You know, someone who gave to this town, gave to this, his country, tough loss. So just our condolences to his, his family, and as you said, services Thursday, calling out was Thursday, funeral Friday, from.
That's what I was going to say.
It's helping you out, routine here. So thank you. And I have nothing further from my side, because I had a committee meeting canceled, and the other ones have not had a meeting since our last meeting, so. So with that, I would entertain a motion, I think I hit everything.
Sean has.
Sean's got it?
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
Do I have backup? You want to?
Yes, you got it.
Okay, enter into executive session under Mastering the Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A3 to discuss. Oh, is there something else?
The microphone?
Yeah.
Sorry, thank you.
Actually, sorry.
May I ask one question?
Sure.
Based on Sean's concerns, what is the next action I need to address that?
Yeah, so I appreciate that, I should have said that, that we don't have a full board, the chair is aware that, at our last meeting, we talked about scheduling the ATSC discussion. We want to have that as a full board, and so he's out for, I think, two weeks, and so we, we, I think we planned that for sometime in March, I don't know the exact date.
I'm thinking of March.
Yeah, that, that, that's sort of the projected time, is that correct, Christie?
It could be the 25th.
The 25th, right, we do have one more.
Might be late February.
Yeah.
Or early, early March.
It's, it's coming soon. Thank you, so.
Thank you.
And just a point, too, and I apologize, and I did recognize you, but, because I know that there's some, one of the things when we have issues in correspondence is, is we can't debate it, it has to be a fully jetted item, so that's why folks were quiet, but thank you for asking the question, and more to come. Okay. Thank you.
Move to executive session under Mastering the Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A3 to discuss.